Yes, sir.
So, we'll call the meeting order. First thing we're gonna do is pledge the allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up to town ministers, weekly update.
Hello.
Hello.
So, I need, um, actually, let me switch things around. So, December 21st is the Saturday that the town hall is scheduled to be open. I have a family commitment that I committed to prior to Sarah giving her two-week notice, so I'm hoping to swap either only be open one Saturday, or I'm fine with opening the next two, but I really need that day off.
So you'll be taking off, what'd you say, the 21st?
So the town hall would be scheduled to be open the 14th and 21st. Now, this doesn't affect code enforcement at all because we're not looking to adjust their schedule. I mean, I can either just be open on 14th, or certainly if anybody needs anything, I mean, I've been known to come up many times to help them, I can shift it to the 14th and 28th, or just kinda play it by any, I just need the 21st off, because I already made plans months and months ago.
Yeah, obviously, we didn't know Sarah was leaving.
So, I mean, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So the auditor got back to me in regards to dates. She's looking at January 13th or January 23rd. The 13th, those are the two days that work both for her and Ron. The 13th is a Monday, and that's gonna be the recommendation of the treasurer and I, because the 23rd is a Thursday, and that's a harder evening with the office open, and certainly based on the questions, we both wanna be able to be present.
And Michelle, she's probably, it cuts something on Thursday in Chapley, is it?
No, she doesn't have anything to s-
Okay, so it's just the town hall being open?
Right. And, I mean, some of those questions are regarding my position, I would like to hear the answers.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
So, 13th would be better, it's a Monday, 6 o'clock, you had already committed to 6 rather than 7 since they're coming.
What's the date?
So far away.
13th.
Can we shut that door, just so I can hear the echo? Thank you. The planning board, we've been all, we've been advertising that we have two open spots, thank you. I have two names that have come forward, I'd like to share them with you in an executive session.
Yeah.
Not looking for anything for you to act on tonight, but possibly for next week. Having some trouble getting some people that you've appointed to committees sworn in. These are appointments from September. My office only sends out so many letters, I've reached out to the department chairs, and kind of told them that I'm gonna recommend next week that you start rescinding appointments if they don't come get sworn in. Seems harsh.
You have a list of the, uh?
Of the people, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And I, again, reached out today to the department heads, I, not the departments, the chair of the committees, and said, "Listen, you know, Johnny was appointed, and, I mean, if they don't wanna be on it, obviously, we wouldn't have appointed them if they didn't tell us they were interested." But I need them to get sworn in, because it's just an invalid seat, really.
Yeah, that's, that's one, one issue I have with town meeting, when people throw someone's name out there and the person's not there. I'm not a big fan of that. I don't know if that's the case with any of those or not.
Well, these are from September, these are some of your side committees that are appointed, so they're, they're unelected. I considered asking legal if it's something that we can incorporate into your appointments policy, that they have X amount of days to get sworn in, or it's automatic, or it's rescinded automatically.
Have they, have these people been going to these?
I don't know, I don't, I'll have, I'll check with, I can check with you off the record of liaisons.
Okay.
It's primarily most of one committee, so. So, David and I just wanted, I was gonna update Ed, and, but he's not here, but it's on my list anyways. So we had the animal control interview on Monday, had a follow-up Wednesday, and I've got that under new business for you to discuss. Main Municipal is still, is scheduled to come out tomorrow, we've had some change in time, so he's gonna be here at 10:30. I do have, I met with the fire chief today, and transfer station department head to go over the list. These were the concerns that they found in Jan- January 2nd of 2009. We went through them, we made sure we had documentation for each one of them. I think that there was only one that essentially isn't done. This would be at the transfer station. "The electrical meter attached to the front of the transfer station guardhouse has a potential to be struck by heavy equipment and vehicles. Please install a barrier such as a bollard or jersey barrier to protect the meter." Bob did say that was something he had budgeted for, because remember, this was last January, and he expects to do it this spring, but that's really the only thing that, as I sat down with both of them, that wasn't actually done, so we should be in pretty good shape. So that's tomorrow at 10:30. Forget staff Christmas party, December 19th?
1 o'clock?
Yes, 1 o'clock. Uh, the treasurer sent out a couple of emails about some rec loosens.
Yep.
Um, and I think that I did speak to one of the members in regards to some receipts that the board and the treasurer were waiting for. She did indicate to me that she has misplaced a majority of them, but she does have a couple of them, so what I have recommended to her is to bring in the ones that she has tomorrow night. We're gonna write up a statement, I mean, we're talking about a total of $200, so depending on how many receipts she has, she'll write up a statement, we'll attach it, and it's, you know, and we'll just have to move forward with it. We are human, we make mistakes, we lose things, it's, it's a one-time, the board can talk about petty cash going forward down the road, but we've gotta do something to attach it. I don't know what's going on with the electrician yet, as far as I know. Last I spoke to the treasurer, there was no update on that, but I don't know if the work is being done, if it started, but again, we need a copy of his license, and we need the volunteer form before they can get down there. We've sent a couple of emails, we've been CCing you guys, so I need your help.
Yep.
We had a couple of situations on last Thursday night, and I, I think I sent you guys a message asking for permission to bring Protection 1 in, Protection 1 ADT. They were supposed to be here Monday, if you remember, David.
Yeah.
Finally got through to somebody today. He actually said he was here Monday, same time that we did the gym walkthrough and everything. He saw the closed sign and didn't try the door, so. He's gonna come back Friday, but essentially, what we're looking for is something so that when you're standing at either one of those counters, working, waiting on the customers, so that you can see the hallway area and you can see down the walkway. And again, either an executive session or something, we've got some concerns with a resident that is really getting at a hand that I need some advice on. David and I, David and I had a conference call with HEB on Monday, you wanna fill them in on that?
Yep, I spoke to the engineer, I kinda clarified a few things for me. We were going over the three options that he had given us, obviously, the, that one option of $1.4 million, I, um, I, we talked about how that was something that we were not probably gonna be able to do, and he pretty much explained to me that that, that was a last resort option.
Right.
It was pretty much to, um, show the worst-case scenario, almost like it was putting fear in the state's eyes, pretty much, that's what he said. And the other option was the $890,000 option there, and, uh, he pretty much said that, you know, it's a 100-year-old bridge, it's gonna fail. So we, we, we continued the conversation to the $95,000 fix-it, and as we talked about that, it made a little bit more sense.
And what was he saying about Milton? He'd said a lot about Milton.
Well, that was it, because see, the problem is, is, the way he presented it wasn't very good, because he made it out to be a two-year fix-it, but then when he talked to me, he says, "Well, it's really gonna be a 10-year," because by the time you do your funding, get this and that rolling, and then the job gets done, you know, you're probably talking, you know, five years or so, and then you probably get a few years out of it, so probably five, 10 year, 10 to 12 years in all, he said. He did state that, you know, he knows that Milton has some financial issues with the bridges, the state of New Hampshire has, well, back when I had talked to him, they were talking 2026, the state of New Hampshire was gonna be able to put forward more money to Milton for more bridge projects. They've actually pushed back other projects, and now they're talking, you know, another, could be another six, seven years or something like that. It's pushing the projects off quite a bit, so the Milton Mills Bridge doesn't look like anything that New Hampshire's gonna jump in on. He explained to me that the problem is with the, doing a rehab, because I was looking at, well, why can't you design us a rehab? You know, keep, keep what we got, make it new again, you know? And he said, "The problem is, is if New Hampshire, if they come in 50/50 on it, they won't go for that, they want a new bridge," which I understand, unless there's some historical value, I don't know. So, so right now, what I, he wants to, he wants to talk to us with Milton.
That'd be a good idea.
And so what I told him, what we would do is we'd contact Milton, see if they wanna have a meeting with us, see if we can look down the road to see what's coming down the pike. If, if we're talking, doing a $95,000 project, getting the thing all right for a decade or so, that might be something where they, you know, you're talking 50 grand instead of, you know, 500.
Right.
So, um, it might be something where they may not have to get state support to do it, but we may have to contact them, see if we can have some sort of meeting, and he, he liked to be part of it, um, and it might be-
You said.
What?
And you said?
Well, I told him that we, we, you know, talked to them and all that.
He said, "No."
Well, I-
He's like, "Can I be part of it?" "No."
Not quite like that, but, um, I, I like to make sure that before I invite somebody in on something like that, we're all okay, so.
So is that something you want me to do anytime soon?
Do you know Pat Smith?
I do, I do. As a matter of fact, Pat's the one I spoke to when I was road commissioner, he was the one who was pretty much telling me that, you know, this is the timeline for this, this isn't that, and that's why I was, you know, it was frustrating for me during that period of time when we're talking about, because I knew what was coming down the pike on the Milton side of it.
Right.
And, uh, but if we do some sort of a rehab where we might be able to get 10, 12 years out of it, it sounds like short change if, you know, we could split the cost with them. I just don't, I just don't wanna see us take the full hit, so, um, we really ought to have some sort of meeting with the, I don't know, the Sluggman or-
What time of year, when do you wanna do that?
What's that?
When do you wanna do that? I mean, can we-
Because it's all up to them, and whatever.
Put it off, January, February?
I was just gonna say, maybe February?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, with the holidays and stuff right now, push it off a little bit. It's not something we're gonna get right on right now anyways, from the sounds of it, so. But I, I did have a conversation with him, and it went well, so, but the, the other, the other options, I just, he did explain why that big, big number was in there, was pretty much kinda, you know, worst-case scenario, so. He did ask me if we've, if the bridge has ever washed away, I said, "Well, it's been there for almost 100 years," so.
So the only other thing that I had was the recap of the gym meeting that we had, the gym, David and I and code enforcement and fire chief walked through the gym building on Monday, that was kind of in preparation of Main Municipal coming tomorrow, the insurance.
Yeah, I mean, right now, we're just, we're waiting for Main Municipal to come and do their thing.
We have the meeting scheduled next week.
Code enforcement had a couple little things there that, minor things, well, we'll see if they're minor, but we figured we'd let the insurance company do their thing first, and then we'll probably have Ken write something up with his concerns, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Take a peek at the agenda, and I'll make you some copies. Any changes, any shifting? We'll put the executive session for the planning board off until next week when Ed's back?
Yes, definitely. That looks good to me. Well, we've already signed the warrant, so we're good there. Lot of information right there.
Yeah, I've read it once, I'm just thinking of going over it again. So, just a quick piece of clarification, David, if I may. There is only one alternate spot left on the planning board open, and, but we have two people that are interested, that's why we're gonna have you take in the session.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So we did appoint one person, and I don't know if I might have said it incorrectly, so. We have one opening, but we have two people, so that's where the executive session comes in. Thank you. Okay?
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for December 11th, 2019.
Second that.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Yeah, we're all in favor.
Want me to run it, because I'll whip us right through this?
Okay, um-
I did not get through the minutes of the last meeting.
Anyone table those?
Yeah, I'll table that, yeah. Okay, department head, committee chair updates?
Dennis Long, chairman of the Warrant Finance Committee. I would just like to give everybody a friendly reminder that we have a Warrant Finance Committee meeting Monday night at 6:15, and then obviously, everybody's welcome, and this other part is to you, Jen. I would like to thank you for putting that question forward to MMA, and working with them to answer whatever questions they might have above and beyond what the questions were, and getting that back. My thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess we'll move on to old business, Goat Hill bids.
So Carl's here. Last week, you guys opened them, and he has done some research on both of them, I think, and has some information to present to you.
Okay.
And I'll give you this, just so you guys can peek at it, because I think this is gonna reference one of the original bills, the bids, if you wanna look at that.
So, yeah, we put the Land and Water Conservation Fund required that this go out to, to bid. They were looking for at least three bids, we only got two, but if you only get two, that's what you get.
Yep.
So we got one bid from Green Shadow Landscaping out of North Berwick area, $190,110. I met with him up there, he walked through it, and I'm not sure where he came up with the number, but anyway, that's the number he came up with. Second bid was Kenny Beck Trail Company, John Copeland is the fellow's name. His bid was a little tricky, because he basically was giving a price per foot, and he gave two, two different bids in a way. One was for a basic accessible trail, which would be him guaranteeing us that it is wheelchair accessible, but if we wanted ADA compliant, which, which would mean a third party would come in and certify that it is ADA compliant, he put in another bid, because he said, "When you go to ADA compliant, they might specify a certain surface materials that would be more expensive than, than what he would normally use. He'd still have the compaction rate, but they would specify different things." So I have a call into Doug Beck from Land and Water Conservation to see what the grant specifies, you know, what, what do we have to follow. I haven't heard back from him, I'm hoping this week to hear back, but either way you look at it, I mean, Kenny Beck Trail Company has done a lot of this work, and Green Shadow had done one other level trail and wells. They hadn't done anything with any grades to it, whereas you know Goat Hill, you're dealing with grades. Looking at, at Kenny Beck's a little bit more in detail, so there's 3,200 feet of trail at $9 a foot, this is for his basic, and I came out to 28.8, and then there's an area on the trail that is not compliant, anywhere close to it, and that's where this 1,000 feet of new trail, he had estimated 800 to 1,000, I went with 1,000, I went with a higher number here. And that's what that's gonna be, is another long switchback created, and he came in at $14 a foot on that for $14,000. So his total on the, the basic accessible was 42.8, and then when you switch to the ADA compliant, the 3,200 feet is 35,200, and the 1,000 feet of new trail is 18, for a total of 53,200.
So his, his total bid is 53,200, that's, that's if we go to the ADA?
Exactly.
Okay.
But John, we required, we don't know which way yet, because you haven't got the barriers.
Exactly, we don't know, but I wanted to put both of them out there for you, so, you know, we kinda know where this guy stands.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we don't know. I mean, my gut feeling is, is probably the grant is gonna require the ADA, that's, I mean, it is a government grant. They don't actually require that the whole trail is, is accessible, it has to be at least a, a third, but Doug Beck said, "In this case, the whole idea of this trail is to get to the top of the hill. If you only get a third of the way, you really don't
Yeah.
get any, you know, the real benefit." So he, he would like to see it completed to the top.
Is, is there any way that we can have this Kenny Beck Trail Company do a, like a, not itemized, but a more detailed bid?
I would, if, if we were to go with them, that was my next step with him, we need something more detailed.
Definitely, definitely. I mean, I deal with bid stuff all the time, you know, you kinda have to have dot your i's and cross your t's, so at this point in time, you're recommending Kenny Beck Trail Company?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, the money, uh-
I don't know, like I said-
I mean, they're really doing the same amount of work for 53,000 versus 190?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
What is the Main Outdoor Fund, what's that balance at?
So the, the land trust also applied to Main Outdoor Heritage Fund, because with the LWCF grant, it's a 50/50 match, so if, say, we use the 53,000 number, you know, you're gonna come, to come up with 27.5 or something, you know, of, of match in this thing, so we have secured 13,000 from the Main Outdoor Heritage Fund towards this project as match, and then obviously, there's some fundraising involved, and there may be some other grant possibilities in here. We'll, we'll probably keep, keep trying to get other grants, you know?
Yep. Cool. Well, we don't have to make a decision on this tonight.
Okay.
No, just the okay that I can talk to John and-
Yeah, I have no, no issue with that at all, yeah.
Yeah, and get more information from him, and-
Good.
And let the other guy know that he's really not in the running, right?
No, yeah.
We can drop the letter on Town Leaderhead if you'd like, and-
Yeah, let him know that-
Prepare that.
Yeah, that is, and he's been calling me, and I haven't said anything, so, but yeah, if you'd let him know, I think that'd be good.
Okay, thank you.
I'll send him a letter.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, policies.
Been doing your homework?
It's on.
All right, so the demolition debris permit, we're still holding off, I've actually scheduled a workshop for you guys for, with code enforcement and transfer stations, we can get to the bottom of that one. The request for public records under main freedom of access has been completed. There are quite a few changes per main state statute, so instead of just having you sign this one tonight, I'm gonna have you review, these are from Burke &amp; Clegg's. They're all statute-based, so they're not something that we really have a lot of flexibility in. There are some different changes in the amount of days that, so we have to notify, we have five days when we get a freedom of information request, we have five days to acknowledge it, and then once it comes in, we have so many days to finish it, and inspection of records and fees, so there are some changes that are somewhat significant, so I'm gonna ask you to review that, and we'll prepare it for next week's signatures. First reading tonight, you're getting the dishonored check policy. The treasurer has already made some minor changes, but if you could look over that, that would be great. And then, and this is the one that-
Same one?
That's, yeah. This is the one the quiz is on next week. This is, here you go, Kim.
That's for next week.
This is, both of these are for next week, you don't, I'm not having to sign anything tonight. This is the new, so remember, we are, we have completely gotten away from LexisNexis for our drug testing. We have tied into local surrounding towns, and we are using, um, help me out, what are we using? We're using, uh-
Occupational health.
Uh, thank you, we're using occupational, I knew one of you.
Well, they call it something else now, but-
We're using occupational health in Sanford, so we're in a whole different pool, so based on that, the policy that we had before was geared towards LexisNexis, and although it was state and federally mandated, it was difficult to read, and it was, there was, so Chapley, Alfred, Lebanon have a surrounding, have a similar policy based on the same pool that we're in, so the attorneys have rewritten this, so it is quite lengthy, but we do need to get this in place before January 1st, and there is a place for everybody to sign off, so I please urge you to look at that, let me know during the week if you have any concerns, because I'm hoping to get signatures on that next week. But again, Burke &amp; Clegg wrote it, so.
Okay, new, down to new business, Census 2020 presentation. Sir?
Thank you. Good evening, my name's Sterling Rup, and I'm a partnership specialist with the US Census Bureau. As you guys may know, the census is running surveys all the time, but we have 130 different surveys running, whether they're producing labor statistics and unemployment, but our, but our constitutionally mandated exercise is the decennial, or, or every 10-year census, and that's coming up in 2020. And it's really, we're trying to work with local communities, community organizations, local governments, to help get the word out about the 2020 census. You know, the, the census is really important, it's safe to participate in, and it's also very easy. Over $675 billion annually are allocated based on census data. We also, it shapes our political voice here in Maine. Article 1, Section 2 of the Constitution mandates the census, because that's how our House of Representatives seats are apportioned. The state also uses it for school redist, school districts, for state legislatures, so it's a really important exercise that touches on our lives in all sorts of different ways, whether it's bridges and roads, or school, SNAP, all sorts of programs that we use and we don't think about, coming from census data are actually, you know, lots of money is really based on that. And so we're really focused on making sure we count everybody once, just once, and in the right place in 2020. We're obviously operating in a, in a more difficult environment than ever, we see lower response rates to our, the surveys we run on a, on a, you know, on a daily basis, and that, you know, the 20, the 2020 census is really the once-in-a-decade opportunity for the community to make sure everybody gets counted, because that's gonna impact funding and political voice for the next decade. If you think about a child who doesn't get counted when they're four-
Right.
-they're missing out, we're missing out on school funding until they're in high school. So it's really important that, that we all engage in the census, and, and I think, you know, I, I live here in New York County, I live in Biddeford, but I don't know the community as well as you do, I don't think people trust me as much as they trust you guys. you guys. And that's the partnership program is really trying to work with the towns. I have to say Jennifer has been awesome so far, both with myself and my colleagues who are working in recruiting. We're trying to hire over 14,000 people in the state and I think just under 2,000 in New York County to help us with the census enumeration. Those jobs pay 17.50 an hour and you get 58 cents per mile mileage reimbursement. They're flexible, 10 hours to 40 hours. And the job start, the training's February, March, and then it runs into July. This is a great opportunity. It's a great side hustle or a job to do on the side and a great way to help your community, right? Because in the end of the day, if we get an accurate count, the community in Acton is going to get an accurate political voice and the right amount of money. Just want to say in terms of safety, we, everyone who works for the Census Bureau, we all take an oath to protect personal information, not just while we work for the Bureau, but to the grave. It's a quarter million dollar fine and five years in prison if you violate that oath. Also, the Census Bureau is a separate entity within the government. We never share personal information with any other agency in the government. Up to the Supreme Court, it's been ruled time and again that we can only share statistical information, never any personal information. Just, and we take cybersecurity extremely. It's a huge part of what we do and how we protect, you know, protecting that data. Because we're having two new options to respond to the census in 2020. For the first time, you'll be able to respond online as well as over the phone. In addition to the traditional, many of you have probably participated in the census before, you would get a paper ballot in the mail. This year, or next year, I guess it's amazing how quickly time flies, right? But the first thing people will get in their mailboxes will be an invitation to respond either over the phone or online, followed up by a reminder and then eventually a paper ballot. And then if you don't fill it out that, then, then somebody comes to your house and knocks on your door and asks those easy questions. It's only nine questions. It's pretty short and sweet, but it's really important. We also offer language support in 12 languages directly and 59 different languages. So it's, you know, we really do really want to count everybody. We also, we don't just collect the data for the fun of collecting data or mobilizing. It's the largest government mobilization in peacetime. We do it every decade. We collect the data so that the, so that towns and citizens and businesses can use that data. We have a data dissemination program. We do webinars all the time. We have, we can have somebody come. If it's something about grant writing, if you wanted support in using census data tools and the data that we collect day in, day out, we also offer those services. And basically, what I'm asking for you is, you know, to help us share the word. There's in that folder there, we've got a number of information that we can share and also a list of activities if the town wanted to support and become a partner, whether it's posting stuff online, which Jennifer has been doing already, helping us share the message. Because again, like I said, you guys know the community better than anybody, than I ever will, and can really make sure we get everybody counted. And I'm happy to take questions from you or from.
I got a question. They go door to door?
Yep.
Okay, for the people, you know, on camera and stuff, so they know when a census comes, is their, your car marked census or anything like that?
No. So if you, if you, the person will eventually come to your house, right? It's, you have options to respond. But if you don't respond, someone will probably come to your house end of April or May. Everyone will have, everyone from the Census Bureau will have an ID.
Okay.
It's, it has a chip. I can't, you know, again, in terms of safety, I can't even check my email without putting, plugging my ID into my computer, putting in several passwords, getting on a VPN, using a backup. So we take that seriously. Everyone's sworn, they'll have, they'll have a tablet and a government ID and they will come and knock on your door. But if you don't want anybody coming, you can fill it, you can fill it out, you know, early or online, over the phone or by mail.
I think what he's kind of was, was kind of getting at was that we have a lot of elderly in our community and they are hesitant when someone comes knocking on the door. So, you know, anytime we send our assessor out or we have anybody doing field work of any sort, we do have a contract deputy in the two neighboring towns. So it's important to let him know when they're going to come out.
Definitely.
Because the residents will, they're going to want to see that ID. And I think that's why he was asking about the car.
Yeah.
They want to know who's pulling in.
Exactly. We won't have, we won't have, we don't have the funding for census mobiles.
Dominoes and Pizza Hut little thing they stack.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. Yeah.
But they all have the same.
But everyone will have the same ID. We can also, I can work with Jennifer as the date's getting closer. We can also try to share that information around the community as well.
Great idea.
That people will be coming. But they will, they will be very noticeably census officials and they'll have that ID. We also have a support number if anybody wants to call. We have already encountered some scams. I think there was one in Montana. The Census Bureau will never ask you for credit card information for any sort of donation, for your social security number. They, the census is free. It's a public good. It's something that, you know, we, and if you ever are hesitant, please do call. There's numbers. I could share that again with Jennifer.
Now, when people, when people, they provide their answers online, so they have, so they're going to have some sort of postcard or something. So they're going to have a code to type in.
Exactly.
So the same person's not answering more than once.
There is a code that will identify the housing unit. If you lose the code, it's not the end of the world. You can still go to the website and put in the information. You might ask if you're across street to make sure it's the right place. We do have a team working on the backend to sort out duplicates. You know, say, you fill out the census and then you leave the card sitting around and then your wife picks it up and is like, oh, I better do this. And then she also fills it out. Again, the information we're collecting, we're able to cross-reference that and sort out those duplicates.
I was just wondering if they, I mean, if they bring the card, we may be able to assist them at the office too. Like we do some of our hunting and fishing and we could help them fill it out and log in and do it.
We can, we can work with you to provide people, again, we don't want people who aren't sworn under Title 13 to be helping, to be coming across personally identifying information.
So you don't want us, so a lot of them don't have computers and stuff.
Yeah, but we could, but if, say at the library, we can set up an event where people who are sworn can provide that assistance to folks. So I can work with you to make sure that we can have those kind of events. Yeah. Again, that's, that's an important thing, you know, everywhere in the country, particularly.
I'm just thinking that a lot of the residents may be more apt to fill it out if they're surrounded by people that they know and recognize.
Exactly, exactly. And we could, I mean, we could try to organize something fun. I mean, we can make it fun too.
We got mine.
Give me a chance to think a little bit. I know, like in Biddeford Saco, we're doing a competition. We're trying to organize a competition between the town managers. Whoever has the best response rate, the town manager, the other town has to like wash the other's fire truck kind of thing. So we, I can, I will try to be creative. Maybe, you know, I'm also open to lots of ideas. So I mean, again, you guys know the community best of what motivates people. So maybe that's a conversation that we can continue to have to think about how do we, how do we engage with everybody?
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, budget printer.
So this is for another motor vehicle printer in my office. The black one off to the side where the assistants is no longer with us. I have the money in my budget line. I just need a signature on the bottom.
Do we have to make a motion?
I don't have to. I just need some signature. Just a printer. If there's anybody else's, I would have ordered it for them, so.
Right.
Did they ever get their other printer downstairs?
So about that, no. I was just corresponding with our budget rep right before we came into this meeting. They're not happy with it. It's not doing as they want it to. It's just not working. It's not a good fit. We're very busy offices. So as much as I've been communicating with them since the day it got delivered and the problems that we've had, and that's good. Thank you. Today I notified them that I wanted it swapped out with one like we had upstairs. They've been coming upstairs using it, the card stock, everything works. They're happy with it. And I'm kind of getting the, well, I'm not sure I can get you out of the first lease. So I'm kind of going, yeah, you will. And we'll just leave it at that for now. So, to be continued.
ACO appointment. Kim and I, I did an interview with two individuals, what, Monday?
Correct.
It was Monday. And they're both very good people. And then I thought it was a good idea, like we did last time, to have another select board member also do an interview with these two individuals. And we've both come up with a.
Met with them this afternoon.
Yep, yep. And we've come up with an individual for the job. We also did talk to Ed.
Yes.
Make sure that he was on board with it. Ed couldn't make it tonight. I failed to mention that earlier. So you want to read that?
Sure, I will read that. So this is a certificate of appointment, Title 30 AMR SA 62602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine. To Jim Driscoll, Selectman of the Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with provisions of the law of the State of Maine hereby appoint you as Animal Control Officer within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30, 2020, given under our hand this day, December 11, 2019.
Make a motion, appoint Jim Driscoll as Animal Control Officer.
And I'll second that.
Show hands. Good.
You can go.
Okay.
I'm going to give you this back, Kim, after all. There was a signature appointment title. Yeah, do you mind? Thank you.
I don't want you to do that first because I want to do this one.
Okay. Go.
So I think we are the last town in New York County. But those of people on budget and some of the selectmen may remember that about two years ago, Harris told us, Michelle and I presented to you, that they are changing their sequel and they're going on, they're going, they're converting Trio over to what they're calling an SQL. It's a very similar program that is just, it's a more web-based, Excel-based program than we currently have. There's not a lot of changes to it, but it is something that we budgeted for and it's a, it's something we have to do. It's not optional anymore. They're not supporting Trio as much. I put it off as long as I can because I was happy with Trio the way it was. But do need you to sign this. Like I said, it's $2,649. It is something that if you go back to last year's budgeting, we knew it was coming. We knew we were going to have to upgrade.
So you just need signatures on this?
These signatures.
Yep.
I thought with, where we're advertising for a new position, and there are changes. I've seen Shapley's version. There are changes to it. And a lot of better things for it. Don't get me wrong. I'm just old fashioned. But we're, we're going to be bringing in a new employee. We might as well train them on the new sequel.
Right.
Rather than, you know, us all going crazy figuring it out.
Okay, we are down to public comment.
How you doing?
Hi, good. I'm Jeff Donahue. I'd like to talk about Article 43 again. I got a couple of more issues. What you sent me, Jennifer, was what you had on these applications?
I sent you, you asked, yes, I sent you the, and I sent it to the board as well. I sent you scanned copies of the entire applications for the ones that were approved.
Okay.
You asked for all those less Tattle Street because you already had Tattle.
Right, perfect. So I got a, I got a bunch of issues. First, I want to read what the rest of the paragraph that the, the Road Committee Chair read a couple of weeks ago. Okay, this was from the DEP, How to Form a Road Association Guidebook. Okay? So I'll read the whole thing through. "If the road in the lake watershed would threaten water quality and is contributing to the degradation of the lake's water quality, a municipality may use public funds to repair or order to qualify for municipal assistance. The road must either have a statutory or nonprofit corporation, road association, and meet other qualifications noted in the Private Ways Act." Now that's my issue, is the other qualifications in the Private Ways Act. The Private Ways Act is 3101 through 3104. Okay? So let's, let's start with Lakeside. Lakeside I contest because their bylaws do not conform with the Private Ways Act. It's the same reason as I've noted before, is their voting doesn't comply with the statute. Okay? The second one was Langley Shores is a nonprofit, but they, I have no approval date on what I got.
No approval date of what? On the application?
Signature.
There wasn't a signature on it?
No.
I can double, I might have not. You didn't ask her, I mean, you weren't specific in that. I grabbed the closest one.
I'll try to be more specific.
If you want to know the exact date that Langley Shore, is that the one?
Well, I didn't see that. The rest of them were all signed by the selectmen on their application and the date and the amount given.
So Langley Shore, that's one?
Right. Langley Shore, the approval date and the amount approved. They're a nonprofit, so.
I can go get that.
It is what it is. Doesn't matter what their bylaws say. They have to, to go with whatever the state tells them to be a nonprofit. Okay? Then there's the Loop Road. And the only thing I got on the Loop Road was the application. There's no proof that they're even, I had to call the state, Secretary of State Corporate Office.
Mr. Donahue, I don't know where you're going with, so I have an idea.
Yeah, I'm contesting. Well, them, I'm not contesting.
With Loop Road, you know, that was one of the ones that we were, you know, we kind of backtracked on, but we'd already made a decision on. There's a reason why we stop Coal Turkey right now until we get all this figured out. Okay?
So my, my thing is, is when somebody comes in and does an investigation later on, okay, this, they're going to get the same information that I got. And they're going to have the same questions that I have, that I'm standing here in front of you asking.
That's why we're, we're looking into it. That's why we've got questions. We're sending upstate to make sure that we've got all our i's dotted, t's crossed and all that.
Okay. And the Wilkins Road I got, and I contest there because they sent you tax forms, EIN tax forms. There's no, there's nothing. They're not a nonprofit. Again, I called the state. They're not a nonprofit. There's no warrant. There's no.
They're statutory, are they?
They're what?
They're a statutory association.
I didn't get that in my email.
They are.
I think so.
Yeah.
I didn't get, I got no bylaws. So again, when somebody comes in and does an investigation, they're going to get what I got.
That's why we're redoing this whole form to make sure that we have.
We know there's issues with it.
Right. You know, to make sure that, you know, everything is attached to it.
So do you see the issue that I'm having with the no vote?
The what?
The no vote. If you don't pay your dues, you get no vote.
Sir, that, I knew.
Because you're on the road committee. You're on the road committee, right?
I am not on the road committee.
You're not? Oh, I thought you were.
But I was for a long time.
It's up to you, you three that sit there to make the final decision. So you're on the line when this goes down, right?
What's going down?
There's going to be an investigation in this.
Sure. I mean, what, the whole, the whole deal that you've got going on with your road?
No, this ain't my road. This is Article 43.
You just started about the no vote.
That's right. But.
Because you're not allowed to vote, right? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about Article 43. This, what I'm standing for here today is not about my road. It's about these other roads.
I just see all these emails that you've sent and you're all over the map here, you know, so we're trying to.
That's my disability. If you had as much chemo as I had, you'd be all over the place too.
But, so you're talking about the no vote for what?
The no vote. If you don't pay your dues, you don't get a vote. It's against the statute. Number four on 3101.
That's what he's not understanding. Who didn't get a vote? What is?
Well, this one here, the first one.
So actually go back to, sorry, one last thing I got to do tomorrow. Langley Shore on, Langley Shore on June 20th got $3,000.
Yep. In Article 4, Article 6, Section 2 says, "The Board Officers of the Association shall hold voting privilege or entitled to one vote each regardless of the number of lots they own." That's not the statute. The statute states that every parcel gets a vote. Okay? Article 3, Section 1 says, "Abutters in the Association shall be designated as voting and non-voting abutters. The voting abutters of this Association shall consist of individuals who own or rent within the neighborhood identified as Article 3, Section 2 of the bylaws. They live and pay their annual bill and any approved assessments." Non, yeah.
So what road is not allowing people to vote? I guess I'm confused.
Lakeside Drive.
Lakeside Drive. There are people on Lakeside Drive that didn't get to vote on those bylaw, on the, is that what you're saying?
If they don't pay their assessments, they're not allowed to vote.
And you have somebody that's willing to come forward that.
As far as I know, all the road associations I've ever dealt with, and I've dealt with a boatload of them.
Then they're wrong.
Well.
Have you read the statute? Have you read the statute?
Those people, those people aren't coming and complaining. I mean, but I've been all through that stuff lately. And. lately, and, so, so what are you saying to us, that all these road associations are sending all their stuff?
They're not statutory road associations.
They're not legit.
Right.
Even though they're going through the state and everything else, the state's wrong.
Yep, because they don't comply, I just give you a couple weeks ago, a case law.
The board got it.
I mean, all these, all these, all these road associations have lawyers, they have them all set up, and they're wrong.
Right. If they're giving you no vote, then they're wrong. I gave you a Supreme Court decision.
Honestly, I don't, I disagree with you, because as far as I know, any statutory road association, you don't...
That's all right, I'll just contact the Attorney General.
No, 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 you brought this subject up, we're gonna try to answer some of you here, so, because I'm not, I get a hundred more, a hundred more emails, I, no, you have not done this longer than I have, I've been dealing with road associations for years.
So apparently you're wrong too, Dave.
Apparently, I guess everybody's wrong, except for you at this point.
No, the Supreme Court is right.
If you don't, if you don't pay your road dues...
Did you read what I gave you?
If you don't pay your road dues, why do you think you have the right to do whatever? So you don't.
Well, if it's a nonprofit, it is what it is. But listen, if I don't pay my taxes in town, do I get a right to vote?
That's a whole different story.
No, it ain't a whole different thing, why? Why, Dave, why?
That's a federal thing, okay?
No, no, right, it's a statute.
If you don't pay your, eventually, okay?
It's a federal statute.
Yeah, yes, it is.
And just like this, this is a Maine statute, 3101, Section Four, go read it, Dave.
With voting for who or whatever, okay? But, I mean, I understand what your frustration is, okay? No, I do, I mean, I think, you haven't had a vote in your road association for how many years?
It's taxation without representation.
How many years have you not paid yours?
I've not, I'm not paying them, for four years.
And you have an issue with your road association, right?
Yeah.
And we all know that.
And all these people should have an issue with their road association as well.
The unfortunate part of this, we're trying to make this Article 43 right, okay?
First one in the state to do it, too.
What's that?
For the first one in the state to do it, so we're trying...
But you're not seeing the statute, are you reading, did I, did you?
Yes, we are, but we need help.
Did you read the case law that I gave you there a couple weeks ago, you did, what did they determine? That if you're not in full compliance with the Private Ways Act?
That's only one thing, though.
Nobody's come to us and said, "This person's not allowed to do this."
I am.
Okay, yep, you are for a different road, okay? And honestly, with some of the emails that I've gotten lately, very skeptical of what's true and what's not, okay? A lot of conspiracy theory stuff, so let us, let us look at the information.
Really, wow.
No, 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 really.
So what do you think about my last email, was that hostile? Because I've had three people look at it.
Honestly, after the other three that you've accused our town administrator of stuff, you've accused the road commissioner Chappely of having some, something going on with your road association, stuff that's not even involved in the town of Acton.
It's conflicts of interest, Dave.
Sir, the guy that's been grading your road, it was grading your road before our town administrator was Selectman over there.
It's great.
You remember when you accused me of screwing up your road, and I didn't do it either?
He wasn't grading that road.
Okay, honestly, we're gonna deal with one thing at a time here, now we're trying to figure this all out.
Yep.
Okay, that's why we're sending this stuff to the state, I have my doubts on this whole thing myself, okay? See, we're the only one in the state of Maine smart enough to do this? I don't know, I really don't think that's the case, that's why I wanna see the state of Maine, look through what we've done.
Who'd you send it to in the state?
District Attorney, we're gonna send it to the district attorney, okay?
The state district's attorney?
State District Attorney, okay? You can go to our lawyer, we can get whatever answer we want, MMA.
Your lawyer is a conflict of interest to me.
Listen, okay? That's your opinion, okay?
Your lawyer and Tattle Street lawyer are in the same office.
I'm sure they are.
And when, and, and, when we, when, well, when the question came up about whether or not Tattle Street met the requirements as far as their bylaws, that was sent to Joe Lankowski, a different attorney, not tied to Burke and Clegg whatsoever, so the board knows and understands and appreciates the two attorneys in there, we're not looking to, you know, as much as you seem to be pointing a lot of things at me, and me, I'm still not...
I see it how it is, and I tell how it is.
We're still doing what's honest and what's right.
Problem is, is when you come to us, and you've come to us with eight different things, and you're going off at other people's roads and this and that, because you're having a problem with yours.
I'm sorry, but that's part of my disability, I'm disabled.
And I do, and I feel bad for your road, you know, because I don't know about your disability, sir, whatever.
That's good.
But, but there's been a lot of conflict with your road and yourself, and the town of Acton really would like to stay out of that, okay?
No, you got in it.
How did I get in it?
The next time that I come here is I'm gonna talk about Wentworth Pines.
Yeah, and Wentworth Pines, I know all about Wentworth Pines.
Okay, Wentworth Pines, well, we might as well talk about it.
Can we, actually, can I just get through a couple of things with him, just so I know where I'm, you emailed me, and I'm trying to ignore everything that's posted online, but you emailed me everything about the petitions, did you receive the 20-plus pages of the petitions? Do you have everything you need from my office on petition stuff?
I didn't receive anything from your office on petitions.
You did, because you replied to it more than once, I just, I have a lot of emails in my inbox, and I'm doing my best to answer them.
I understand you're shorthanded, and I've been trying to be patient.
Well, you and I went back and forth whether you wanted a secret ballot petition, or, so you did receive the packet.
It's gonna be under MRSA 2522.
So you received the packet, do you need anything else from me regarding the petitions? Because as I understand the emails, they are complete.
No, I just need to know the procedure, what the procedure is, is the only thing I need to know, I have the petition pretty much written.
And the last email that I sent to you was that you would need to make an appointment to come in and see me, but I sent you the entire packet that steps it out. So you can make, I just wanna put this out there, because I'm tired of reading things online, and somebody telling you to go to Jennifer Rue, and you thinking that's the funniest comment, so you, I want to go through the emails.
I don't trust you, Jennifer.
And that's fine, you don't have to trust me.
I just assume, go to another town and ask somebody there.
Then stop sending me the emails requesting the information, if you're gonna ask five other towns, now I'm trying, I wanna get through these things, you asked for me for petition paperwork, I sent you a fifty...
I asked you if there was a certain form that I needed.
And there's not, the Lebanon person that's commenting is wrong, and if you sent, if you look through that packet that I sent you, you'll see that the town clerks, we do not provide blank petitions in an effort to stay unbiased.
Because it's not on your charter, right, because I've talked to CFIT and CFIT has your own special thing, and it's part of their charter.
The petition piece, are you done, is there anything you need from the town of Acton, is there anything you need from the town of Acton in regards to your petition request?
No, just, do I have to bring it in before I get signatures? I know that I cannot change it after I get the first signature, does it have to be verified before?
It is recommended, and this is only for your benefit, and even though you don't trust me, it is recommended that you bring it in so that I can look at it to make sure that it has the right statutes and the right columns, because if you inadvertently forgot to do the printed name, you know what I mean, you've gotta do printed name, signature, address, town, there are certain requirements of it, so it is, any petition, whether it's been a recall of a Selectman, or anything over the years that I've had to deal with, I always recommend people come in and let me look at it first, because I will give you what I believe is my honest opinion.
Okay.
So is that piece done between you and I? You're set on the petition?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, ask what, you're petitioning?
I'm petitioning for a road ordinance to not put straight salt or any chloride-based chemical in the Shawlian District, the Resource Protection District, 300 feet from water wells, and I think that's it.
Look with that.
And I did say, and I did say to him...
It's awful hard to play a road without, I haven't even put salt in your truck.
It's a lot, it's hard to get the chlorides out of the water after they're there, too.
Now, you're talking about when they calciumed your road, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that post, and DEP, that's what they...
Well, I disagree with the ordinance.
Go ahead, do that, I mean, it is what it is.
That's my right.
Yep, yep, that's fine.
So petition, yeah, that is absolutely right, and as clerk, I will help you make sure you have the correct paperwork if you decide to move forward, so that piece is you're good on?
Yes.
Okay, so the applications in regards to Article 43, I have sent you everything that the town of Acton has in its possession, I just clarified, and I know there were a few people talking, so I just wanna...
Well, Dave just said that...
You gotta let me finish, you gotta let me finish, because I'm the one you don't trust, and I'm the one you're going after as a Chappely Selectman, because somehow you think I have influence on Article 43 over here with the road commissioner. Langley Shore Drive, to answer your question, on June 20th of 19, they received $3,000. So as far as the documentation and what you requested, does that finish up that piece of it for Article 43, as far as what you've requested from the town?
Wilkins, Wilkins Road.
I sent you that, that was...
Yep, Dave said that they are statutory road association?
Nope, all I'm sending you, I am the administrator, the secretarial piece of the middle, I've sent you everything I have on file for Wilkins. So if you have questions about that packet, you're gonna come back to the board, but I wanna make sure, because I'm having trouble following all these emails, that you have everything you need from my office.
So, right, so you sent me everything in that packet, everything that they've seen?
I sent, we pulled every single road, we scanned it and sent it as one attachment.
Okay, perfect.
So that piece is done, okay? So that was that one, and the other thing was, what was the other emails about? The auditor questions, I just, yeah, I mean, we're gonna discuss these briefly, because I just need to, so the email that you...
I'm set with the auditor questions, that...
Oh, I was just gonna read out loud what was said, so just, I mean, from my board, and kinda...
Well, the new ones or the ones that were?
Well, no, I'm not gonna read out the questions, so I had told you more than once that as far as the town is concerned, we don't get involved in private road associations, because we haven't, I haven't in my role. You did send an email that says, and this was after, with all the other emails going on, so in regards to your comment that the town doesn't get involved with private road associations, would you care to explain Paragraph Three on Page Two, when you were the town clerk at the time? You might wanna keep this document handy, you're gonna need it, I'll be referring to it soon. So my response, now this was a document, just for clarity, so that it can be brought up, this is a document that Tattle Street must have sent to their people.
Right, during their warrant.
In 2007, and third paragraph, what you referenced, third paragraph, second page, third paragraph down, where it was...
I was thinking that the town code enforcement, the town clerk.
Town officials, right, it's, thanks, town officials.
You signed their warrant.
I signed a warrant as a notary public, as I do many ones. I'm not lis, I'm not, it's not fair of you to bring me into this, let me finish, no, you brought this up. So my response to you was, I started working for the town of Acton in June of 2006, and did not spend any significant amount of time with any of those individuals creating those bylaws, for anybody that was involved in Acton in 2006, when I came in, I wasn't even part of this administrative team, nevertheless, those notes are dated 2007, they don't indicate when or which clerk they spent time with, furthermore, it has the word clerk plural, and it doesn't even indicate it, it was in Acton. I feel like I've gone above and beyond and always tried to help you, and provide you whatever needed you, information you need to, my end statement that you're referencing is, "It would be much appreciated if your tone was a little friendly in those emails, otherwise, if that can't happen, I will insist you contact the board of Selectmen directly."
Right, that was email, I didn't see a tone, I've asked three other people, and they didn't see a tone.
Because they're not seeing...
I wasn't doing this when I wrote the email, like you were sitting there reading it, so I think you made the tone all by yourself.
We have gone above and beyond to assist you.
What happened to Wentworth Pines, when I asked you about the five-inch-thick?
It's pulled, and it's been sitting on a counter, you never called to come in to get it.
Two and a half months it took you to find that.
Listen, that was a freedom of information that went through a different department, Mr. Donahue.
I don't have, I don't have the money to buy that file.
You have the right to come in and look at it, you need to, and I will find you the emails that says your folder is ready, make an appointment to come look at it.
Now, I wanna stop there.
That file is ready.
What is the issue with Wentworth Pines?
Wentworth Pines is a subdevelopment with nine houses in a recreational area.
When was this done?
They have covenants on their deed, okay? In the registry is their plan and nine pages of covenants.
Yep.
On Page Eight, it clearly specifies that they're responsible for maintaining the road.
No, no.
No?
They're maintaining, any road association, any subdivision in the state of Maine, okay, that hooks onto a private road, no, you're gonna wait a minute, excuse me, sir.
Go read it on Facebook, I just put the whole story on Facebook.
Quiet, for one minute, okay? Now, any subdivision that's proved to, any town in the state of Maine, okay, that's connected into a town, into a private road, okay? If they put the subdivision, that doesn't mean they have to take care of the whole road.
It does, and the covenant is says that...
But at the end of the day, they're on the same, they got the same right of way, they're responsible for the road just as much as your house is, okay?
No, I benefit from them maintaining the road.
Exactly, you do, when you don't pay your dues, so you're benefiting.
There's no dues, I'm not part of their subdevelopment, Dave.
But they're part of your road association.
No, they are now, because the guy across the street who's part of the subdevelopment scammed them, and told them, "Listen, Dave, no, you listen, it's my turn now."
No, you're gonna listen, okay?
You're out of order, point of order, point of order.
You're not running this meeting, I am running this meeting.
Point of order.
Okay, now, I'm gonna explain to you, if you have an issue with your road association, and...
No, this is an issue with the town.
No, listen, I am speaking, you will listen. If you have an issue with your road association, and that, if you can come to here and prove, okay, that's with your road association.
No.
Okay? The town approved the subdivision as a subdivision, there was not a town-approved road, so it's a private road, that has nothing to do with us. Okay, I am done with you now, can you please sit down?
Really, Dave?
If you have any other questions, email them directly to the Select Board, please leave our town administrator alone for a little while.
Really, Dave?
Thank you.
The next petition's gonna be on you, Dave.
Good, do me a favor. Any other public comments?
All right, how about some announcements?
Roland's coming up.